Discussion of the motion. Let's vote.
Board member Anderson?
Yes.
Chair Rolf?
Yes.
Board member Nichols?
Yes.
Board member Burton?
Yes.
Board member Newton?
Yes.
Board member McConaughey?
Since I was not at the meeting, I will abstain.
The vote passes five to one.
Business item two B, approved resolution number 199, authorizing the chair to execute amendment number four to the agreement for development of land for community development area number one, Jordan Valley Station. David Oka.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the board. This is an amendment to the RDA agreement governing the TOD, the Jordan Valley TOD. As submitted in your packet, there are some issues at hand, and to start off, I'd like to have our legal counsel come up and address these. There's kind of two parts to this. He just wants to make sure that there's a clear understanding of those issues that are highlighted in yellow on what was submitted. And then, subsequent to the submission of the staff report, the additional wording that's underlined in blue came in from the developer for your consideration. So we'll take this in two parts. And first part, we'll ask Adam to address this.
Good evening, board members. I'm Adam Long, legal counsel for the agency. As Mr. Oka introduced, we have essentially two questions here. What's being proposed is an amendment that would allow the developer to more freely transfer property to another developer for certain purposes, in this case, non-residential purposes, so office, retail, commercial, and in particular, senior living facilities. Agency staff has identified a question about the scope of that senior living facilities concept. And in your packet, the portion that's highlighted in yellow is that question. And that's whether, if you think that allowing the quicker or less restrictive transfer of property for the development of commercial or senior living facilities is a good idea, exactly what the scope of senior living facilities is. The question we have regards active and independent adult communities as defined in city code. And I'll read that definition. "A community or living facility designed specifically for seniors 55 years of age and older, which typically contain recreational amenities and support services which provide for social interaction and mutual support in a common interest. This type of housing is designed for seniors who are healthy, active, and capable of completely independent living, and may provide limited support services such as medical or convenience services." So, in the scope of senior living facilities from a, on the very care-intensive end, say, an Alzheimer's care center, this is the opposite of the spectrum, where it's really a community of apartments or townhomes or something like that, designed but not necessarily restricted to people 55 years of age and older. So again, the questions are, one, whether the board thinks it's a good idea to allow freer transfer of property within the project area for these particular uses, and if so, what is the scope of senior living facilities? And I'm happy to answer questions.
Questions from board? Councilman, or board member Burton?
Thank you, Chairman. So you said that it's designed for 55 and older, but will not be restricted to 55 and older?
When we drafted this amendment, we used definition, existing definitions in city code. And the city code definition of active and independent adult community does not mandate an age restriction.
Okay, so being senior has no definition particularly or restriction for this community?
It says it's designed specifically for seniors 55 years of age and older, but the definition in city code does not prevent someone who is 54 from moving in.
Thank you.
Board member Newton?
Under the existing agreement, as I read it, it has to come back to us for permission to transfer. Is that correct?
Correct. Under the agreement as it currently stands, any transfer of property to a, essentially a third-party developer, so not transfers that are completed buildings or apartments or something like that.
Right.
Correct. It does come back to the agency board for approval.
So why would we want to give up that opportunity?
If you recall, this similar question came up when a similar members presented to the board several meetings ago. In this case, it would allow the freer transfer only for uses that are office, commercial, retail, or senior housing, not for residential uses.
Yeah, okay. I understand that. I just think maybe, well, I don't always want government involved. In this case, I would like, I personally would rather have it bring to us if there is a situation that is going to be involved in transferring a piece, then we understand and know what's going on, and we're able to stop something if necessary that we may not want to have happen there, or at least have a discussion about it. So I would say, I would probably vote against making this change.
And if the developer, we're taking this to the board of the request of developer. The agency is presenting this with a neutral recommendation. As the developer explained it, the developer doesn't do senior housing, would like the ability to transfer it quickly without any concern of the agency saying no.
Okay. Thank you.
Board member Anderson?
Thank you, Chairman. So this would be the third amendment to the agreement for development of land. We've done two amendments already, is that?
This would actually be amendment number four.
Would be the fourth one?
One of our recent meetings, we did amendment number three, which was several, essentially, cleanup changes.
Okay, so this is the fourth amendment to the original dated in July of 2012, so it's five years, so it's about once a year, a little more than that, that we are making amendments. And I don't know, I mean, I don't know that I mind active and independent adult communities, but I do have kind of a similar concern that council member Newton shared, is, you know, there's a reason things come before agencies and boards and such. So, all right, that was really the only question I had, was just the number of amendments. Thank you.
Board member Burton?
Chairman, with the chairman's permission, I would like to have an opportunity to hear from the developer, to hear his reasoning why he wants to have this amendment, if we may.
That'd be appropriate. Please keep your remarks to five minutes or less, and state your name and address for the record.
Jeffrey Vitek, 2121 South McCollum, Suite 303, Salt Lake. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Jeffrey Vitek. I'm the owner and chief executive officer of Boulder Ventures Development. It is true, we've been before you several times to talk about amending this ADL. In our business, in the development business, things evolve, and what was contemplated years before sometimes, there's no longer a market demand for it, or requirements change. We see this request as in keeping with that. We've been involved in this project since 2010. I worked with staff to help design the code to allow transit-oriented developments to start in the city. We do them for a living elsewhere. So far, we believe Jordan Valley Station is incredibly successful, and we think we've met our obligations and exceeded them. We're currently in design for the next two phases of large luxury apartment communities, and we're designing a upscale townhouse community for sale with an application submitted to DRC. Active adult independent living is not something my firm does or would do well, and so we're trying to find a quality developer that could step into our shoes for a small portion of the site, would have to adhere to all of the requirements of the development agreement, including code compliance, entitlements, et cetera. And we think that would be compatible with the other endeavors we're pursuing here. The challenge we face of the existing agreement, rightly or wrongly, is it takes a great deal of time and money for an assisted living developer to come in and do market studies, site plans, engineering, et cetera. And even if they comply with everything in the development agreement, they then have this decision to make, and, or rather, you have this decision to make. It makes it very difficult for us to find someone to step into our shoes. We've now had three separate operators all withdraw because of this requirement. So we're coming here asking you to consider, as it relates uniquely to this use, to not require that. We're not asking you to let us sell the entire project lock, stock, and barrel. We're not asking for any special exceptions as it relates to entitlements or zoning. They have to comport with all of that. So that's our first request. The second request is, and the reason for the blue language, as I said, we're trying to build for-sale townhomes. And unwittingly, I think this, while we work hard and collaborate to get this language right with staff, I think an interpretation could be that an individual townhome owner could violate the provision, and that we don't think is the intent, and it's not something we would wish for. So those are the two clarifications, and I'm hopeful we will have amendment number five. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions from board? Board member Anderson?
So of the parcel, thank you, Chairman, for the parcel that you're looking, do you have an approximation of where it's located on the property, or acreage, that's related to the adult?
Yeah, for the assisted living, they're one of two parcels. As you enter off of 3200 West, heading west, there's a parcel immediately to the left, and it would need to be lot line adjusted, but the acreage is about four acres. The alternative is across that same intersection to the north, and it is 2.93 acres. So those two.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Thanks. Board member Nichols?
Thank you. Just a comment, just a consideration from my colleagues in looking at this. I mean, already included in the same section is continuing care facilities as well as assisted living facilities. This is just, to me, is just one more that would fit. I don't see any problem with it. If we go, it's like just extending one little more, or one option additional beyond what we have. I wouldn't want to go down the road of just flat-out residential, but I think in this case, the fact of adult community, the adult communities I've been, that I'm familiar with, are, they're always exceptional. They're very well-planned, and they're made for a specific purpose, and I don't see any problem in this section with that. As for the blue wording, I'm just kind of in the middle, so happy to go either way on that.
Board member McConaughey?
Thank you, Chair. So a quick question. My understanding is that the language in blue is something that was given from the developer? Is that correct?
That is correct. We had already submitted the staff report before that blue language came in. It's clarification for the purposes of individual condominium units being.
Has our legal department had an opportunity to review that language in blue, and is there an opinion from legal regarding that?
Yes. Adam has reviewed that.
Maybe I should intervene, Mrs. David Bricky, for the city legal department. There's not a single member of our legal department who thinks that language is appropriate. Not Ms. Otto, not Mr. Laneras, not myself.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I noticed Adam was about to respond to that. Can I still hear Adam's comments, please?
As Mr. Vitek explained, that blue language is language submitted by the developer out of perhaps an overabundance of concern about the interpretation of the provisions existing in the ADL as it stands right now. The ADL has written, the transfer provisions go away essentially when a parcel or portion of the project area is fully developed and a certificate of occupancy is issued. The concern they express to the agency is whether an individual townhome in a row of townhomes could be sold without violating those restrictions before, for example, the entire parcel is developed. Based on my review, that's, I think, perhaps overkill, but perhaps no harm done.
Board member Newton?
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we keep the existing document as it is and not approve this change.
Thank you, Chair. So to clarify, or board member Newton's comment, is it a rejection of everything that's been proposed, or acceptance of what was in the packet with those minor modifications rejecting the additional language that we have separate that's in blue?
At this point, I would like to reject the whole thing.
Second for discussion, a motion by board member Newton, a second by chair Rolf. Discussion to the motion. Board member McConaughey?
Thank you, Chair. I think I share a similar perspective to board member Nichols. I don't see any significant issues adding the active and independent adult community language. I do have an issue with that blue section where it's incredibly, it reads incredibly broad. For those who are here tonight who haven't heard it, "Notwithstanding anything to the contrary contained herein, the developer and its assessors shall in all instances have the right to transfer an individual market rate residential unit to a transferee without the consent of the agency regardless of whether or not all residential units to be constructed on portions of the site have been fully developed." That seems very, very broad and has me rather nervous. I would rather see the language more tailored to the specific instance that was shared, rather than something that's calling out all residential units regardless of anything else the contract says. That just feels too broad. But I would be okay with approving something that has that first change. So I would be opposed to the full denial at this point. Thank you.
Board member Burton?
Thank you, Chair. I didn't have a problem with the blue since it was just reestablishing what was in there before, but if others do, I don't see that that would be an issue to take that out of there and make the other parts in there, so I would be opposed to your denial as well.
Let's vote.
Board member Newton?
Yes.
Board member Anderson?
No.
Board member McConaughey?
No.
Board member Nichols?
No.
Chair Rolf?
No.
Board member Burton?
No.
The vote fails one to five.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the changes as were in our packet, not including the new writing that is in blue.
I'll second that, but just for clarification, what you're saying is your motion is to include the yellow and not include the blue in the packet that we have. I'll second that one.
A motion by board member Burton, a second by board member Anderson. Discussion to the motion. Board member Nichols?
Just a pause, that's all it was. I was stalling. I saw Chris step out, and I wanted to give him a chance to come back.
Let's vote.
Board member McConaughey?
Aye.
Board member Burton?
Yes.
Board member Newton?
Yes.
Chair Rolf?
Yes.
Board member Anderson?
Yes.
Board member Nichols?
Yes.
Vote passes six in favor.
Business item two C, approved resolution number 202, authorizing loans to the EDA number four, Fairchild for funds transfer of $6 million for the purchase of property. David Oka?
Yes. In order to facilitate the purchase of the Fairchild building, these funds need to be transferred, and that's what this resolution does. Any questions?
Questions from the board? Thank you. Move to approve resolution number 202. In its entirety. Second. Have a motion by chair Rolf, a second by board member Newton. Discussion to the motion. See you none. Let's vote.
Chair Rolf?
Yes.
Board member Burton?
Yes.
Board member Newton?
Yes.
Board member Anderson?
Yes.
Board member Nichols?
Yes.
Board member McConaughey?
No.
Vote passes five to one.
Need a motion to adjourn the redevelopment agency meeting and convene city council meeting of November 8, 2017.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion by board member McConaughey, a second by board member Newton. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I call back to order the city council meeting of November 8, 2017. First item of business will be a pledge of allegiance. Tonight, that will be led by Carson Evans from Troop 1104.
May the audience say the pledge of allegiance with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Will the audience please be seated?
City manager? Oh, thank you very much, Carson. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor and city council. No messages.
Assistant city manager?
Nothing tonight.
City attorney?
No messages tonight.
Scott?
Mayor, council, just, I wanted to express my gratitude to the council and mayor for reestablishing the general plan committee. They'll be a very useful tool for us if we're dealing with land use issues. We've got two public hearings tonight that are dealing with future land use amendments potentially, and the general plan committee will definitely be a good help to us, so thank you.
Ryan?
Thanks, Mayor. Nothing tonight.
Bill Piper?
Nothing tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Justin?
Got a couple of things I wish to inform the council about, give an update. The first item is with regards to our water system. We've received an update on our water system through the month of October, so 10 of the 12 months, and currently, we are 1% below our water use for the year 2017 when compared to 2016, which is remarkable considering the population growth that we've seen within the city. The second item with regards to our water system is, as part of the 90th South Bangater Overpass, Jordan Valley Water and UDOT will be taking the Jordan Valley Aqueduct offline for a period of about two to three weeks, which will make things interesting around the city as we use water from sources other than the Jordan Valley Aqueduct. We were originally planning to do this a month ago, but with the warm temperatures, made it difficult for Jordan Valley to be able to accommodate that request. So we'll be doing that this coming week. Our streets department has finished paving and is looking forward towards the snow removal season, and I believe that's all. Thank you.
Chief MacLeary?
Thank you, Mayor, council. Just one item to, a calendar item for you. Thursday, November the 16th, at 1:00 at the Veridium Event Center across the way here, we'll be holding our graduation of the Joint Fire Recruit Academy. We have two firefighters in that group, along with Murray and West Valley City. They'll be graduating at 1:00 on November the 16th, and that will bring us up to full staff. Thank you.
Chief Diamond?
Thank you, Mayor. As a, to take care of some issues within the police department, basically span of control issues, there's been some reorganization. We've had, or converted four police officer positions to three sergeant and one lieutenant position. All of those, two of the sergeants and the lieutenant will stay in patrol, and then one detective position was converted to a detective sergeant position, and those promotions will happen on the 12th, effective the 12th. We had the promotion ceremony on Monday. Thank you.
Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Mayor. I just, as everybody knows, yesterday was election day, and I just want to thank all of the individuals that ran for office. I know it's a lot of work, and a lot of walking, and a lot of putting signs in, and mailing things, and we still have a couple of weeks as last-minute ballots get mailed back and counted, but I am just happy to see that kind of involvement. Currently, we're at a 22.2% voter turnout, which is a little low, and so I hope people will become engaged and pass their votes. Also, on Sunday and last night, I drove 70th South, and it's nice to see some pretty aggressive progress on that. I still wish it was a couple of weeks, I wish it was done a couple of weeks ago, but it is nice to see that they're being very aggressive, and it was nice to go down. There's still some work to be done, though. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Councilmember Nichols?
Thank you. I'll echo what was just said, as far as those running for election. I know firsthand, as we all do, how difficult that can be, particularly in at-large elections when it's citywide. We all, when we ran, covet the opportunity that council member Anderson had of having himself on the ballot and no one else. I was surprised last night, you had 100% of the vote. It was like, wow! But with that being said, it takes a lot of work, it takes courage, and as soon as you put your name on a ballot, I've said this before, there will be bad things said about you, whether they're true or not. That's just what happens in politics, and people will hate you just because you disagree on one issue. And that's just, that's what happens, and it takes a lot of courage to be willing to take that kind of mudslinging. So hats off to all those who ran and excited for West Jordan's future. Moving on to a second topic, Jordan Valley Water Conservancy District, just wanted to bring an update. Just today, the board approved the refunding of $90 million worth of bonds, and just wanted you all to be aware of that. It was a significant change. Effectively, what this will do, the hope is to obtain as much as a 9% savings in the interest over the life of those bonds. It's a really good opportunity, so in the long term, that would be a significant improvement. So just wanted to make you aware of that. Thank you.
Councilmember Newton?
Nothing, Mayor. Thank you.
Councilmember Burton?
Thank you, Mayor. So hopefully, everyone is aware of this, and I'm hoping to hear a comment that I got to participate in the groundbreaking ceremony for our cultural comment that I got to participate in the groundbreaking ceremony for our cultural arts building. So that's exciting, and I'm glad to see that's happening. And I'd like to see all the Boy Scouts here, like to welcome the Scouts. Thank you for coming and joining with us today. We'd love to hear from you if you have some comments you'd like to share with us. And I had only one ribbon cutting the last two weeks, but it was great to have that one as well. Things are still happening, progress is still moving forward in West Jordan.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. Other than echoing the comments that have already been made regarding, well, other than echoing the comments that have already been made, I have nothing additional to add, so thank you.
We'll move to citizens' comments. I do have three signed up to speak, but it looks like all three would like to speak during the public hearing, unless you'd like to speak now. There's an opportunity as well. There's Corbin, England, David Green, Stephen Hunt. If you'd like to speak during the public hearing, that'll be a little later in the agenda. Anyone else wishing to speak on a topic of their choice? Now is the opportunity.
I don't know, can I get my subject on the agenda right now?
You are allowed three minutes to speak on the subject of your choice.
I suppose it could take a little longer, two minutes?
Three.
Three minutes?
Mm-hmm. Please, per the record, state your name and address.
My name's Jerry Anderson, and I live at 8451 South, 115 East, in Sandy, actually. And we have used the, uh...
Old Pioneer Hall since 92.
And I need to slide over there and get the pointer across. And so you guys are voting. And so I look at that, and we have an eagle slide there. And this is probably the first time you've ever seen a list of the original 500 members of the Mormon Battalion. Hopefully, it's me. In this sack is, uh... Now, if you get going in, first we count the mic. That's a picture up, that's a picture up, and there's a picture of our marching in the 24th grade. And we got Dean Fulmer there. Plus, we have a flag. And these bars stand for the five companies. This is a big star. And the big star is for the Savior, and the other stars are for where the church has been. But this picture of mine, the Mormon Battalion is in 1846. And the other stars are for the states, and that's a Spanish spelling. Now, you don't put all this stuff together overnight. But we've been in this building since 92. We showed up last month, we just knew it one night, a month. And we have all our food company, they showed up, and there was a wedding ceremony in here. And so, uh... And the reason is, is because we're a nonprofit organization. Thank you. We're a nonprofit organization, and we would like to continue to hold our monthly meetings there. And the lady, Ashley O'Connor, is that sets the appointments. She didn't know we met over there, and so she made two appointments for the same night. But, uh, we don't, we don't pay for that, because we can't afford it. And so, come before you today to see if you would approve us to have one meeting a month, every third Tuesday there, except in the summer, we don't need it. And so we can continue this work. Now, these eagle slides, we present to Eagle Scouts to go over their slide. And we presented a lot of them, and these are not easy to make. And we've had a lot of good members in there, and a lot of them have died, and it's tough to keep the organization together. So that's my appeal, and that's why I'm here.
David?
Thank you, Mayor. Sir, I will ask that the Parks staff work with you. There is a process for filling out an application for waiver of cost. That will, once you fill out, will be submitted to our office. I have a feeling that, given your significant history and cooperation in promoting Utah history, it may be waived.
So I need to do that? Okay, I didn't know that until tonight, so...
Well, thank you for coming and sharing.
Which one did I get with?
Parks? Okay. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak during citizens' comments?
Pardon me?
I was just asking if anyone else wanted to speak during citizens' comments. Thanks for your presentation. I will close the citizens' comments portion of the agenda, and we will move to the consent calendar. I am pulling item G for discussion. Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, because I wasn't here on the 25th, not necessarily an objection, but I'd like to remove A and H.
Okay, A, G, and H. Councilmember Anderson? Yeah, I'll move to approve the consent calendar, minus A, G, as in Gary, and H, as in Howard. Second. A motion by Councilmember Anderson, and a second by Councilmember Nichols. Discussion to the motion. Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. In conversations with our Public Works Department, I learned a little bit of the background behind item I, the cost to set up the electricity for the new arts facility. I'm guessing most of the council's not aware of the little bit of the backstory behind that, so if you're okay, I would like to ask Justin Stoker if he could share a little bit about why that's only $800 to get the power out there instead of 40-plus thousand.
That's fine.
Mayor and council, as common as the city installs new infrastructure, whether it's water booster stations or new facilities, that we apply for power from Rocky Mountain Power to service the facility. In this situation, we made that application to Rocky Mountain Power. The cultural arts facility is a substantial power draw. And so, the initial discussion was around bringing an overhead power line from the north side of 78, swinging it over the road to feed power to the cultural arts facility. In our discussions with them, they were really good to work with, and we were able to express our concerns about having overhead power running to the, first of all, running over 7800 South and then into a facility such as the cultural arts facility. But this kind of got in the way of some of our objectives. So through negotiations, we were able to come to an arrangement where Rocky Mountain Power would bring the power down a pole on the north side of the street, bore underneath 7800 South, run the power lines underground to the south side where the cultural arts facility would be located, and then provide underground power to the building. This is no small feat. It results in a cost of about $42,000 to Rocky Mountain Power to be able to provide that service to the city. Our portion is only approximately $822. So we were able to work with Rocky Mountain Power to save the city quite a bit of money and still meet some of our objectives regarding overhead power.
Let's vote. Councilmember Anderson?
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Newton?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Mayor Roth?
Yes.
The vote passes six in favor.
Councilmember McConaughey, consent item A.
Both A and H together, just because I haven't been, well, A because I wasn't here for the meeting on the 25th, and H because I wasn't here for the sessions that surrounded those. I didn't feel like I was at a point where I could support those, so I'm not necessarily opposed. I just didn't want to vote in favor, so rather than detracting from all, I wanted them pulled. So I will at least afford to anyone to make a motion to approve.
Councilmember Nichols?
Thank you, move to approve consent items A and H.
Second. Have a motion by Councilmember Nichols, a second by Councilmember Burton. Discussion to the motion. See you none, let's vote.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Mayor Roth?
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey?
No.
Councilmember Newton?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
The vote passes five to one.
Consent item G, approved resolution 17-218, authorizing the mayor to execute an equipment lease agreement with Zion's First National Bank regarding the purchase of large vehicles for fiscal year 2017, 2018 in an amount not to exceed $2,343,206.15. I pulled this item, if you look on page 91 of the, of item G, I just had one question, I'm good with everything else. There is a 938K loader scheduled to be purchased for solid waste. And I'm just wondering, since our solid waste is contracted, and since we don't do any of the transport, I wonder why there was a 938 loader, a three-yard loader, assigned to solid waste? Why we leased it to this point, and why we're purchasing it now? Justin?
Thank you, Mayor. This is, at least that we've used, not just for solid waste, but for a number of the different operations within the Public Works. It's a heavy loader that we use for all types of construction purposes. It's primarily used in solid waste as we receive the garbage carts that we, that the city owns. They come, arrived on a, on a 53-foot trailer, and so we use this loader. It comes with forks in the front, we can outfit it with forks, to be able to offload the garbage carts off of the semi trucks into storage. When we're not using it for the solid waste and the garbage carts, and moving around the garbage carts, we can outfit it with a bucket. It's the same loader that everybody saw at the arts facility. We are just looking to purchase it off the lease. The, it's a loader that we believe we can use for, has a life of approximately 20 years, and so we would, we're just asking to be able to purchase that. It's, it's an item that we, that we use extensively throughout the year for a host of different issues.
Councilmember Newton?
So, Justin, so would you explain to me what solid waste that you're moving with that?
Yes, sir, the solid waste is the division which pays for it. The solid waste division is our garbage, effectively the garbage enterprise. But the portion, we don't use it to haul garbage, and it wasn't purchased to haul garbage. It's to be able to manage the blue, the green, and the black garbage carts that the city owns and delivers to each of the residents.
So, yeah, okay. So the question is, if, if solid waste is paying for it, maybe, maybe there's more, more appropriate category to pull it from rather than solid waste? Because typically, it's not being used very much for solid waste, right?
It, it's primarily used by solid waste. They have first, first call on it, and it's used quite extensively. Every day, we have two Public Works employees that have a shift where they go around to the different residences and pick up damaged garbage carts. They load those carts onto a flatbed truck when they take those out to the different residences. Along with that daily use, there's the deliveries that we receive several times a year.
Okay, yeah, you're putting that on a flatbed truck, what does that have to do with this loader?
The loader's, the loader is used to, to offload the semi and to load the flatbed with the garbage carts.
Okay, is there a better way to do that?
It has, it has forks on it, and so...
Would a forklift maybe be better for that? I don't know.
The forklift that we have is a warehouse forklift, it's meant for indoors, or indoor use. The loader that we have is for outdoor use, and it has multi-purposes to it. But to answer your question, we could, we can pay for it out of different accounts if that's appropriate.
Yeah, I... Yeah, I'm just not sure that maybe that's the appropriate place to do it, and maybe we ought to, ought to take a look at that and, and make sure that we're charging the right entity for that use. Maybe we ought to, I don't know, I don't know. I'm not sure what we should do at this, at this point in time. Other than if, if it's, if it's needed and used in, in all different areas, maybe, maybe that should be addressed and, and change that for the budget.
It's an awfully large loader for moving plastic garbage cans around, three-yard loader. Russ, did you have a comment?
Yeah, Mayor, thanks. I wonder if the council would be willing, there's other items that we're really waiting on to get this passed. I wonder if the council would be okay if we approved it, and then we took that item under consideration as administration, and maybe report it back to you.
Move to approve item G. Second. With the caveat that we have a report back at our next regularly-scheduled council meeting as to why this was tried, and see why we were $4 million to the plus in the solid waste fund four years ago. And I'll still second that. We have a motion by Mayor Roth, second by Councilmember Anderson. Discussion to the motion. See you none, let's vote.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Mayor Roth?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Councilmember Newton?
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
The vote passes six in favor.
Public hearing item 7A, received public input and considered for approval, a general land use map amendment for 24.08 acres from public facilities to medium-density residential, and rezone 24.08 acres from public facility zone to R18C, single-family residential, 8,000-square-foot minimum-lot zone for property located at 5411 West, 90th South. Mikhail Investment LLC. Sean Mikhail applicant. Scott?
Thanks, Mayor. I'm going to turn the time over to Ray McCandless, our senior planner. He's been working with the applicant on this particular development, and he can give you a summary and how we got to this point.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. To orient you with this property, it is located just on the south side of 90th South and about 5,400 West, 90th South. It is located just on the south side of 90th South, at about 5,400 West, 90th South. It was originally part of the Westridge Academy, and it has, has been sold, applicant is looking at it now to develop it for single-family homes. The property is currently zoned public facilities, and then it's also designated on our future land use map as public facilities. I think when we did the general plan back in 2012, it was anticipated that this property would be an extension of the Westridge Academy, as you see, there was a bald diamond on the property. The, just to, again, just to orient you with the property, and you can get an idea of what's around it, we have to the north, it's 90th South, and the church, to the east is the Wildflower Acres subdivision, which is zoned R110. To the south, and southwest, is the Westridge Academy, and over here, there's, this property is zoned M1, and there's a foundry on that property. Just to the, on the west side, there's some, the Sunset Ridge Apartments. As we noted in your, in your staff reports, the applicant initially submitted a zoning request to rezone this property to R16B. That zoning district allows a minimum lot size of 6,000 square feet. This request was taken to the planning commission. The planning commission held a public hearing, and after receiving comments from the public, the applicant had requested that this be, that it be tabled, and to come back with another zoning proposal, and so they came back with a request to zone property R18,000 square foot, or R18, which has minimum lot size of 8,000 square feet, and that's the proposal that's before you this, this evening. When we, this is the, the request that is before you, with a rezoning request and a general plan amendment application, the applicant's required to submit a concept, development, or a concept plan, just showing you what a possible lot layout might look like, and this is what the applicant has provided to you. Just as you're going through this, keep in mind that we're just dealing with a rezoning request and not the subdivision layout, and, and how it ties in with things. It plays into it a little bit, but really what we're looking at tonight is the use itself, and whether the zoning makes sense on the property. When they did take it to the planning commission, the, the planning commission felt that, that R110 was more appropriate than the R18, just given that the adjoining neighborhood to the east is zoned R110. But even at that, the, they were particularly concerned about the proximity of these homes to the industrial uses to the southwest. They felt that there really should be some separation in that. In this case, we've got a road that extends out to the south between the industrial property and Westridge Academy, but they felt that there needed to be some kind of a separation between those uses. So, as I mentioned, there's the foundry that's here, it's in operation 24 hours a day, and with noise and fumes, as you might expect, there may be some issues with bad impact on those adjoining residential properties. So, the planning commission discussed this request, and then again, after the public hearing, they voted, or after the public hearing, they voted unanimously to forward a negative recommendation to the city council to rezone the property. This was another layout that was provided just this afternoon by the applicant, just showing what the lot layout looks like, or what the, or potential subdivisions of this property. This is the zoning map, so as you can see here, this whole area is zoned public facilities. This is the subject property. This property right here is zoned R110D, as is this across 90th South. This is R112E, and then you've got manufacturing, or M1 zoning that's here to the, the, the west. This, the apartments are actually part of the PC or Plan Community Zone. As part of this rezoning request, we're also looking, the applicants are also looking at amending the future land use map to medium-density residential to reflect the proposed zoning. As you can see here, this is public facilities. This property right here is medium-density residential, and then very high residential here. So, again, the applicant is, is looking at making this R18 zoning a transition to the higher-density residential here to the west, and a transition to the multi, or to the M1 district to the, the west as well. But again, the planning commission felt that maybe R110 would be more appropriate for this side, so. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. I think the applicant does have some slides that just show the housing type, housing product that's, that they would be bringing in as part of this request.
We really shouldn't be looking at that as part of a rezone anyway, though. Councilmember Burton?
Thank you, Mayor. My, my question is, I'm looking at the report, and I see that staff recommends denying this, but I, when they went, met with the commission, the staff was in favor of it. Is that correct?
No, the staff has, has not supported the R18 or R16 zoning. Our, our feeling is that it should be zoned R110.
Thank you.
Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, and I'm just trying to, to look at ideas, I don't know that they're all, can be done, but I look at this, and I, and I see something that, that I would call, like, maybe a variable density, for lack of a better term, where you can, here we have an opportunity with some homes where closer to the, the, yeah, closer to the east, I don't know what that neighborhood's called right off the top of my head, you've mentioned it, to the east, Mountain Iris, Wisteria, that are R110 lots, if maybe that side of the 24 acres could be more R110, and as you get closer to the apartments, this actually becomes a transition from the R110 to maybe an R18. And I, I don't know that we have anything on our code that, that permits a, a variable type of a density, but maybe that's something the general plan use committee can talk about at some point. It's just, I don't know, it's just an idea.
There are a couple, I mean, there, zoning is, is commonly used as, as a transition, and on this property, it's, it's a little bit tricky just given the, the uses. You know, certainly zoning one half of the property, or part of the property, R110, R18 might, would be an option, another would, might be through the application of our PRD zone. I think we've got the, there's no acreage requirement for that, but again, to do that, you get, you end up with some amenity, but you also end up with higher density typically as part of that. So, you know, there are some options on this, you can either go one zoning on the entire piece, or split the zoning, it's just kind of how, how you, how that use would best fit with the neighbor, neighborhood. Just keep in mind that the R18 zoning is more dense, and so you're putting more, more density, or a higher density next to those manufacturing uses on that southwest, that southwest corner, so, like I say, this was a little bit tricky.
Councilmember Newton?
So, you have a higher density with those apartments on the corner, right? What kind of density are we looking at there? Do you have any idea?
I don't know, I would think, I want to say roughly 20 minutes break room?
Okay, yeah, yeah. So, would not going to R18 be a transition from the R110 to the, whatever the apartments are?
Sure, sure.
And I spent three years 200 yards from that industrial facility, and there's virtually no noise from that facility, they're really good, so I, I do not see that that would affect this any more than it affects those apartments there, so I, I think it's very, the, the transition with the R18 would probably work, especially if, you know, the market's going to drive the, the quality of, of development there in the, in the houses, and, and, you know, I, I come back constantly and look at Ivory Highlands, which is, which is very small lots, but it's an extremely well-done subdivision, it's not in, not in West Jordan, but barely just outside of West Jordan. So, so I, to, to me, the, that, that lot size works.
Thanks. Well, now, open the public hearing, we have two signed up to speak. Corbin England.
Good evening, thanks for letting me speak here. My name's Corbin England, I'm at 9096 South, Wisteria Way, just directly to the east. Just to backfill a little bit on the story, the first time they were, before the planning commission, they were provided some input from the planning commission, some ideas, some things to do. A few of those things were, maybe add some green space, things like that, and they're to beautify it, to make it a little more enticing. When they came back with their second plan, none of that was in there. Pretty much all they've done is try to cram as many homes into this area as possible. This is the perfect analogy of a round peg into a square hole. It just doesn't fit, with all due respect, you know, I live right there, and there is quite a buffer between myself and the industrial zone there, and it is noisy, and it is noisy 24 hours a day. The due diligence, so in their initial application, they talked about going around and talking to the businesses around the area, and how this would fit kind of the profile for lower-income housing for the employees that work some of these blue-collar jobs. What was lacking with that was any sort of them knocking on the doors of the neighborhood surrounding there, and I would surmise that the reason that they do that is they would like to need a feedback. And I know this isn't before the commission, but there is a considerable drop in, or a height issue here, it's at least 12 to 15 feet high. I'm in my second story, and I'm still looking up at the ground that this is on, so there would be some significant grading issues. So, as you can tell, I'm opposed to this, I'm in favor of an R110, I'm in favor of doing, you know, like a split, you know, R110 to the east, R18 to the, to the west, but that doesn't solve the industrial problems. So, I would just ask that you side with the planning commission and deny this application. Thank you.
Thank you. David Green?
Thank you for hearing me here. I too live right off of that, immediately to the east, towards the southern end of it. Reading through the information that was on the council website, talked about the fact that this was all future expansion land, if you remember back to the photograph, the overhead satellite view, you've got a baseball field, you've got a soccer field, you've got a rokes course, these are all important things that are part of Westridge Academy's program, or at least what it used to be. Our youngest son was at Westridge back about 2002, and those types of recreational activities are very key to their program, so I'm not quite sure what's going on there, but you can also see there's a few storage buildings and other things like that that are part of the property that's been purchased by the developer, and, and we can hear the industrial stuff where we are, but it's not bothersome. You know, we can sleep with the windows open in the summertime, and, and, you know, it's just background noise. But with all those areas, it, it just, again, it seems like Corbin went with the round peg in a square hole, but I would say this is an odd-shaped peg trying to cram into a round hole, and it just is inappropriate for this location. There's been significant runoff issues in the past, we had flooded basements in a heavy rainstorm about nine years ago. Some of that's been fixed, but every time it rains hard, we kind of keep an eye out for it. This would greatly increase the amount of runoff coming off of that property. And I guess my only suggestion would be maybe they can trade for another piece of property that's a little more appropriate, and turn this into a park. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak during the public hearing portion of this item, 7A? Please. Please, for the record, state your name and address.
Good evening, council, I'm Janet Farnsworth. I am the executive director at Westridge Academy. My address is 5008 Pine Laurel Lane, so in the subdivision that we're discussing to the east. I come here just to offer my support of this project. We have been involved with the Mitchells and the Foundation for many years in the charitable works that we do, and when we were approached with this opportunity, felt like it was a meaningful opportunity that meshed with our larger mission, which is to serve kids and families who might not otherwise be able to afford the kind of work that we do. The idea of expanding, sharing some of our space to create neighbors, taxpayers that are part of our community, and that have always embraced the kids of Westridge, is something that we are really in support of. There was a reference made to our athletic and sports program, we, there is a baseball field and a soccer field that are included in the plat of land that we've sold. We have space at the front of our property on the Bagley Park Road that we intend to develop both the sports fields into, using what is right now just dry pasture. So, we're in support of this, and, and look forward to hearing from you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I will close the public hearing for item 7A, and turn to the council for discussion and our motion. Councilmember Anderson?
Yeah, just a, a question for staff, and I don't know if it's better for Justin or for you, Scott, but it shows a secondary road going to Bagley Park Drive, which is kind of an industrial road. Is that, I mean, do we normally let resident, I mean, I know there's an ingress and egress on 90th, but is having an industrial road be a secondary ingress, egress, is that a typical use, or typical access point?
It's allowable, it's not preferable, meaning I'm not aware of any sidewalks along Bagley Park, and so, in, in our estimation, it's not a complete street, but as far as access or vehicular distribution of traffic, there's no problem with it emptying onto Bagley.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. Kind of continuing on that same thing, is that access road to Bagley Park a full-width road?
I, I, we just have the, the concept, city code does require a full-width road. This presented to you does appear to be a 50-foot-wide local residential road, so it, it would have to meet city standards if, if this moves forward.
The one on page, the one on page 13 of the, the packet that we received made it look like it might perhaps be smaller, so...
Perhaps this, this one?
That one made it look like it was perhaps a little bit smaller, so that's why the question. My primary concern, I'm not overly concerned with the R18, although what's shown here is roughly 80 homes, and that would be a lot of traffic primarily going on to, and coming and going primarily from 90th South, that has me concerned, so that's one of the reasons why I would be more towards R110 at, at this point. It seems to be a lot of density with another access. It seems to be a lot of density with another access pretty limit, or that would be primarily on 90th, which is already heavy traffic, and adding that additional tonight has me a little bit concerned, so I would be more in favor of a higher, higher square footage, lower density to help accommodate that issue. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Burton?
Thank you, Mayor. I see the developers here. May we hear from the developer?
Yeah, we had, we've actually closed the public hearing, so we're in debate now, so.
We thought we would have, we would be called up to speak. I'm sorry. Is it possible to open that up again so we could present our case?
May I use personal privilege to permit the developer to speak?
That'd be okay.
Brief.
Thank you very much. I'm Sean Mitchell. This is Troy Wilberton, our engineer. I'm the owner, co-owner of the property, and I want to thank you for your time. I also want to thank you for the opportunity to meet with many of you prior to this. We've gone to the planning commission now twice, listened to a lot of different people, and tried to come up with something that's usable. I'd like to turn the time over to Troy for just a minute to talk about the housing, because I think one of the biggest concerns that some of the neighbors had is the devaluation of the property, and so if I can just take a minute and introduce you to Troy Wilberton.
Thank you for the opportunity to present. We need to get to the slides that we provided. So, this is where, this is where we really should be looking at housing types. We're talking about a zoning. I meant to talk about zoning. As it relates to. Because, once it's zoned, what house gets built on it is a different issue. Understand. No control over that. I just want to, we keep hearing comments that this is way too dense, it's a round peg in a square hole, those kind of things. What I really wanted to point out, if we can, is just the opportunity here to, let me just jump, sorry, somehow the slides we provided are not here.
This way, you'll be able to back up to public hearing.
So, if we may, could you start the presentation for me? That'll work. So what I'd like to do, if we could, is just focus on the code and what the zoning states here. So the R-18 zone, and then one line below that, there's the R-18 listed, R-19 listed, and R-110. I really just wanted to point out, as you go across the table, all those elements of the lot size are the same but for the frontage, and then, of course, the size of the lot itself. So we go from, in the R-18, a 75-foot front with an 8,000-square-foot, and then to go to the R-110, it's 10 feet wider. That's really the difference. And then there's 2,000 additional square feet, and I just wanted to point that out. Then the next point that I wanted to make in just that simple comparison is also the point in the table below, which is the size of the product associated with the lot. And that's really where the homes come in, and I don't want to bore you with that, other than I'd just like to make the point and state that an E or a 3,000-square-foot lot, or, excuse me, a square-foot home, as prescribed here, which is the same as the R-110, can be provided on the R-18 lot. So the same home can be built, whether it's an R-110E or an R-18C. And I just wanted to make that point in just showing what is the true difference between the request of what we're asking, and that is the true difference. It's 10 feet on the frontage and 2,000 square feet in the lot. I'll just back up quickly to this exhibit here, because the point I want to make is, I know there's, so in the, in the shape of the lots, and again, the accusation, they've just crammed in as many homes as possible, that's really not true, and I do consider this in heart, and. The width here is constrained, and so by adding the additional depth, it's really not an option in the way the property is constrained. By, by, in order to go that additional width, to get 2,000 square feet, it adds.
Point of order, Mayor, we've allowed the additional conversation, and we've allowed beyond the three minutes already.
My apologies.
Thank you, sir.
I'll terminate there.
I'd just like to point out that it hasn't been asked for, for a R-18E. It's been asked for a R-18C, which is considerably smaller than a 3,000-square-foot home. I would be supporting this if they had asked for a R-18E-size home, because those to the east are D-size homes, so that would be a step up. The lot size doesn't concern me near as much as the home size. I'd like to hear from the council.
Thank you, Mayor. So, going on your, your comment, at this point, I guess I would ask if the, if it's known if the applicant would be amenable to an E-size home? Is that a conversation that's been had? Is that something that's been brought up with the, with the planning commissioner with planning?
I don't believe so. I think it was proposed to C-size home, 18C. To me, it's, that's a good transition from R-110 to apartments, the 8,000-square-foot, but to drop to a C-size home, I think that's, that does what the residents have stated, devalues their existing property.
I don't have a solution for this, but I'm, I don't like that access on the Bagley Park Road either. I actually drive that a lot and make that a residential street where children will be walking on bicycles with bigger-type vehicles that are traveling during the daytime hours when families be using it. I can't find another access to get into that, however, without going over to industrial area. I'm not as concerned about the entrance onto 90th, because even though we want children on that road, it does have a sidewalk, and I think there would be less of a tendency for them to go on there, because that is a busy street, but I can see them going and using Bagley Park. But I was just kind of hoping we could have a better solution than have that entrance on there. I know you mentioned that you don't like that either, but I, I don't have an answer.
I would recommend that the council make a motion to table this until a date certain in the future, so that the, if it's denied tonight, they'll have to wait to bring it back, whereas if we table it tonight, they have an opportunity to, it sounds like to me that the neighborhood adjacent is willing to talk about a solution to this. They're not totally against having, they just want to protect their value. I think we ought to table it until a date certain so that we could revisit this issue after they've had an opportunity to look at some of the other options. Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we tabled this item to date no later than the second council meeting of March 2018.
I'll second. We have a motion by Councilmember McConaughey, a second by Councilmember Anderson. Discussion to the motion. See you in a minute. Let's vote.
Councilmember Newton?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
No.
A.R. Wall?
Yes.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Vote passes 5 to 1 in favor.
Public hearing, item 7B, received public input and considered for approval ordinance 17-61 regarding a general plan land use map amendment for 5.27 acres from neighborhood commercial to medium-density residential and rezoned from A20 agricultural 20-acre lots zone to R1E, single-family residential 8,000-square-foot minimum lots zone for property located at 4652 West, 7800 South, Woods Farm. For properties, LC, Randy Buller, applicant. Scott?
Thanks, Mayor. I'll turn the time over to our city planner, Larry Gardner, to explain the proposal.
Good evening, Mayor and council. This piece of property is right on the corner of 7800 South and the railroad tracks that run the length of the city. It's south of the city-owned piece of property that was surplus a year ago and, or over a year ago, and rezoned to R-18. The applicant is in contract to purchase this property, and right now, as you stated, Mayor, the property is zone agriculture 20-acre lot, but the underlying land use map is for a neighborhood commercial, neighborhood commercial zoning that would be, uses would be similar to the AutoZone and the GM and the convenience store that's there, but he's asked to rezone, or change the land use map to medium-density residential, which would match the property to the north and actually all of the properties to the west. There is a railroad line that runs directly to the east of all of this property. However, the applicant feels that this would be a good addition to the city-owned property. You can see it's this site right here. This is UDOT facility, and then this is the Air National Guard Training Facility, and of course, the airport's on the other side of Airport Road. This is the city surplus piece of property, and so the accesses from this, if it's rezoned, none of them will be onto 78 South. It would all come via the residential streets that are already dedicated and owned by the city. There'd be this one, two, three different, or I should say, two different accesses, well, three, excuse me, this that comes this way, and then there's a couple of different ways. So the access would be all primarily established residential streets. This is, the oval area is what the applicant is proposing to construct on this site. It ends at this point, basically. A large portion of the property would be used for store-motory tension for the entire 29-acre residential development. Staff is in support of this, this application in changing both the land use map and the zone change to residential, however, the planning commission, in a unanimous vote, recommended denial of it. Their reasoning, as you can read in the minutes, was that they did not feel that residential should back up to an arterial street or belong adjacent to an arterial street. So staff does recommend approval of this. If you have any questions for me, I'll be happy to answer them.
Councilmember Burton?
So this arterial street that they're concerned about, they, there's no driveways on that street?
No.
Is that correct?
Yeah, we don't allow.
That would not be permitted, so they'd have to come off of another street?
Yes. They'd have to come off established neighborhood collectors.
Okay. And I was reading several comments on there. It looked like a lot of them had to do with the property to the north and not had, pertained to this property. Would you agree with that assessment?
I think that this was probably on the coattails of that, yes. I think that there was still people that didn't want to see any type of residential development on either this five-acre portion or the 24-acre portion. We tried to, you know, the issue was, is that both of the items were on the planning commission on the same meeting, both the land use amendments and the subdivision, and so it was, they kind of got clumped together. And so I think that the planning commission thinking that they didn't want to change anymore commercially, land use, established property into residential, so.
I see. Thank you.
Tonight, just to be clear, tonight, we're only talking about the five.
The five-acre portion. We're not talking about the 24-acre property that's already been.
That's done.
Yeah, it's already been done, and actually, the, the planning commission approved the preliminary subdivision plot for the entire 29 acres contingent upon this land use map amendment.
Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you. I've only been on the council for a year, and most of that year, much of that year, has been dealing with houses that back a railroad track in Welby. And I just want to know, this is, this is what we want to do. We want to put residents on the back of a railroad track that operates from 1:00 a.m. to 5:00 a.m. There's two trains. You have the Utah Railway and you have Savage Rail that operate that line between 1:00 a.m. and 5:00 a.m. when tracks isn't operating, and I get a lot of calls, I've got on the train between 1:00 and 5:00 a.m., and it's noisy, and we're putting more residents right on the back of a railroad track so that they can sleep well between 1:00 and 5:00.
I think that the Welby side is a transition yard for Savage rail lines, and that's way farther to the south off 90th. I'm not aware of trains that travel from 1:00 a.m. to 5:00 a.m. along this north-south. I think they go on the, the tracks line from Kennicott down.
Well, this, this line right here is, feeds, feeds Freeway and West Valley City, is partial to the concentrator plant for Kennicott, and also delivers paper to newspaper agency on 56 West in, in West Valley. So this track is used.
Yes.
By, by at least one train, 1:00 a.m. to 5:00 a.m. I just don't know, I mean, we, I don't know, I'm, I can't. So, that's all. Thank you.
Thanks, Larry. Open the public hearing for item 7B. Stephen Hunt has signed up to speak.
I'm speaking on behalf of a small group of neighbors. I might request a little more time, please.
You'll be allowed five minutes.
Thank you. My name is Stephen Hunt. I live at 7699 South, 4730 West, just adjacent to this property to the west. And as a note, we do hear the trains. Your highnesses, I'm, I'm here to speak with barely controlled anger over the many broken promises that you and your predecessors have lied to us about regarding this property. I hope that the press that has been invited to this meeting will take note of the facts that I'm about to deliver. In 2010, I moved into the Wheatland subdivision with my wife. We were told by the city and the developer, Jordan Bangeter, that this property was master-planned to be a park or even open space. Our bad for believing your predecessors. In August of last year, you discussed an updated use for this land and rezoned it, the parcel just to the north, for medium-density housing. At that time, you attached a requirement for a 60-foot-wide berm, a protective berm, running adjacent to the railroad tracks on the east side of the property. We were pleased with this action to protect against the possibility of a train accident. As you know, and has just been stated, these trains carry flammable and corrosive and toxic chemicals. At that meeting in August of 2016, our beloved mayor called for a subdivision there to act as a human buffer for our neighborhood to the west, meaning that now other men, women, and children will die fiery and gruesome deaths. But, he said, "The good news for us is that they will buffer our neighborhood. Mayor, shame on you." The idiotic comment was then made by a councilman in that meeting about somehow we as neighbors should be glad that the council wasn't encouraging a nuclear waste processing plant. should be glad that the council wasn't encouraging a nuclear waste processing plant in the neighborhood. How do you even get dressed in the morning by yourself? In May of this year, to appease a potential purchaser, the 60-foot wide berm was arbitrarily removed by the council with no notice to us as neighbors or warning that it was even to be discussed in a city council meeting. The Planning and Zoning Commission blamed it on a former city manager who accidentally removed the 60-foot wide berm to please the prospective purchaser. You replaced this 60-foot wide berm with a six-foot-high vinyl fence. This just defines idiocy. Again, shame on all of you. You got us. Our bad for trusting that you would act honorably. If you can remove the protective berm in such a willy-nilly fashion, we suggest that you can also willy-nilly reattach it to the property and ask that you do so. Now you are considering rezoning the five-plus-acre piece of property adjacent to 7800 South, bordered by a main highway artery only feet away to the south, a dirty and loud UDOT yard only feet away to the southeast, a toxic chemical-carrying rail line and military base only feet away to the east, and a little farther to the east, the National Guard helicopter base with its associated noise. Several weeks ago, your own planning and zoning commission voted unanimously, unanimously to not recommend this zoning change. One commissioner even stated that if these homes get built so close to the highway, UDOT, the railroad, the military base, that people would move in, not realizing these multiple negative factors, then would quickly move out, depressing home values all around and creating, in his words, the commissioner's words, "A slum," to which comment the entire commission agreed with unanimously, hence their unanimous vote against zoning change for this property. We in the Wheatlands neighborhood urge you to follow the unanimous recommendation of your planning and zoning commission and reject this rezoning request. Certainly, again, according to your own planning people, there is a much better use for this land. It is in your power to do the right thing at this time. Please reject this application. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Councilmembers, Mayor, my name is Paul Emmett. I live at 7511 South, 4730 West. And I want to remind you that my comments are separate from Mr. Hunt's. I speak for myself. And I wish to address only the property subject of today, the five acres. I want to just correct a few maybe misperceptions on it, and that is that the comments of the planning commission did not separate, their reasoning for recommending against zoning change was not just because it was up against 78 South, but because of a combination of things. And the combination is what their reasoning came to, if you'll read Commissioner Sokowski's remarks specifically. And the combination that I'm referring to is the rail line to the east and the UDOT operating station to the east, then put that in combination with the road, and in combination with the entrance to that little cul-de-sac against the neighborhood commercial. So it's the combination that they were saying would present a problematic, you know, combination for the future residents. And I want to also mention, you may not be aware, but the UDOT operating station cannot abide the noise ordinance during times of snow, and it operates all night. I don't live near it, maybe half a mile or less, and I can tell you that I can hear the station when it operates during snow periods. I can only imagine if my backyard was against the UDOT operating station. I do want to correct something that was mentioned by Mr. Hunt. He said that the residents were not notified of the May meeting. Councilmember McConaughey did send me an email. There was no public notice to us, but I did personally receive a notice of that meeting and did not share that with my neighbors. I thought that you would honor the requirement to keep the berm in the contract, and so didn't feel the need to advise any of my neighbors. So I would encourage you, on this particular five-acre piece, to vote against changing the zoning because of the reasons that the planning commission set forth. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, I'm Tina Lyon, 683 South, 4730 West. There's a couple of things that I'd like to reiterate. The access, although there's potentially three different ways, this area will use one way, and that's coming off of 7800 South in between, right next to the neighborhood commercial, which coming in may be not be the problem, but leaving, it's already, it's very difficult to get out of the neighborhood that way. So if that's the case, then it's going to be putting more cars through our neighborhood. We have a quiet neighborhood with lots of young children. There's not another way that they could get in because of the rail line and UDOT station and armory. And the other exit is to the roundabout on 4800, which is already such a huge hazard, and there's wrecks there all the time. The other concern I have is, as a parent and as the school community council chairman for our elementary school, we have been trying to get crossing guards for our neighborhood for five years. There's never money for it, or they don't feel like there's a need for it. It's not safe enough to send our kids without crossing guards. So we're not going to send our kids so you guys can count them to, so we can have a crossing guard. Until there's a crossing guard, we're not going to send our kids across 7800 South. This is just adding to that problem by putting more homes with, with more kids. And I understand that, you know, city doesn't approve things based on school needs and school doesn't, based on city needs, but the current residents are not being served that way. So what makes you think there's going to be money and availability for more homes there? I'm also very disappointed that the buffer was just taken out of the cell, and I want to know, why did you guys let that happen? Why did you approve it and then just let it sell without it? Because we all know that having the buffer there is one more infrastructure that, that a developer has to work around. I do live near the UDOT station, although there would be five houses between me and them with more homes there. And not only is it noisy during the snow season, but there's bright lights all night long there. So luckily, I'm a little bit further away, but those homes right next to it's going to be awful. And if they.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please. You'll be allowed five minutes to speak since you're representing the developer.
I can probably do it in one. Thank you. Mayor and Council, appreciate the opportunity to be here and be before you tonight with this application. I'm Randy Bowler, 6663 South, 2200 West, West Jordan. Been at that location now for 41 years. Maybe just one item, and, you know, there's been some facts presented, some fiction and some emotion. I guess it's your task now to sort through all of that, as you make a decision. But I'd like to just point out that in the planning commission preliminary plot approval, one of those conditions was that of a six-foot masonry wall along the railroad track. It had been stated that that was a vinyl, but it's masonry. I think I would just entertain any questions that you may have for me. We think the application is logical, reasonable, and would request your consideration for approval, but any questions you may have.
Councilmember Burton.
Have you considered keeping that commercial, I mean, residential commercial property there, similar to the neighboring property? Just keep commercial along that piece of 7800?
We looked at that, and just didn't feel that there was that much, would be that much interest and demand for commercial in that location. So we did consider that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Tamara Parko. I live at 7727 South, 4730 West. And I just, I really want to urge you to deny this change. As you can see, directly west of that property is all commercial. It makes no sense to me, at least, to change that to residential, which is going to, as several people have said, add to the traffic problems. It takes quite a long time to get out of our subdivision onto 7800 South going east. And because of all the things that have happened in the past with the city not being honest with the people who purchased in our neighborhood, people have said, "Oh, well, we could put a stoplight right there." Nobody's going to put a stoplight right there. It's inconvenient, and it's 50 feet from another stoplight. It just doesn't make sense to build houses up against, like they said, the rail track that carries toxic things and, and putting lights and noise all winter long into somebody's home where more than likely those things aren't going to bother anyone running a business. I can't think of any business that's going to be open and run and be bothered by those things in the middle of the night. And that is when the train goes, it's between 1:00 and 5:00, because I live quite close to that. And so I would just ask that you would take into consideration the people who already live there and the safety of the people who could potentially live there, and just leave it the way that it is so that it's not adding any burdens to, to the people who are already there and the unknown issues that the people who move in there are going to have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I'll close the public hearing for item 7B. Turn to the council. Councilmember Burton.
Kind of like, well, I'd like to follow up with a question I was asking earlier. I think making that a residential commercial area similar to what's directly to the west would be ideal for that. I don't know if we could make that motion at this time right now because that's not what's on there, or could we do that?
Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor. And maybe I can ask our city manager or city attorney, if this were to go through, is there, like, if a homeowner is closing, is there a document they can sign that says, "Yes, I am purchasing a home next to a 24/7 rail operation adjacent to a UDOT property that's 24/7 in snow season," so that they're aware of what they're getting into?
Yes, there is.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. I was not here when the northern portion of that was approved, but it seems to me, since that was approved, that the, that the southern five acres that we're talking about is a natural transition there. And we have, right across the street on the other side of 78 South, we have the subdivision backed upright against 78 South, and all along 78 South, we have that situation. So I don't see that as a problem. If we can have, like Councilmember Anderson suggested, a notification to people who buy there, then that would be appropriate. With that comment, I move that we approve ordinance 1761 regarding a general land use map amendment for 5.27 acres from neighborhood commercial to medium-density residential and rezoned from A20 zone to R18E. And I think that's all I need.
Did you want to require each individual to sign an affidavit?
Yes, let's add that.
A second first discussion. We have a motion by Councilmember Newton, a second by Mayor Rolfe. Discussion to the motion. Councilmember Nichols.
Thank you. I'm, I've been in silence this whole time just going through this. It's, this is just one big massive headache. I know what we approved originally. I remember the berm. And the next thing you know, it just disappeared, and the property's in somebody else's hand. It's like, what just happened? And there's nothing legally we could bind him to, because basically that was us saying we agreed to a rezon with that condition. That we were going to surplus it based on that condition. That was what it was. It was, we, we surplus it based on this condition. But that was all the city's doing. There's nothing we can do about that part. As far as the compatibility goes, I mean, I prefer to stake neighborhood commercial. I think that section is more than appropriate for that, particularly with UDOT on the other side of the tracks on the east side. Not necessarily the whole parcel. I mean, I, I think those homes on the northern end are, would fit in nicely, would half and half, half neighborhood commercial and half residential. I think it would fit in nicely, especially with, I love the fact that we're using the detention basin against the tracks. It's a great buffer. It's a great use of land, of the land use there. I'm really kind of torn in the spot. I really don't, this is me, I'm not speaking for the council, just my opinion. I don't think I'm in a legally defensible place to say you can't rezon this. I can't see a reason to deny it. And the reason being is, on the south end, you have residential. On the west end, you have residential. And you have on the east side, a different zoning, but yet it exists all along that whole corridor, the same zoning. I just don't see a legally defensible position to say Mr. Bowler can't do that. I'm really frustrated about the 60-foot buffer. And I can see here in his design, I think the developers made some, some progress. There is a little bit of a physical buffer, like distance, but I think we also talked about a height buffer. I don't remember what that was offhand, but I, maybe, I don't know if anyone up here does, but we also had a height buffer on there as well. But we had an eight-foot berm with a six-foot fence on top of it, 60-foot wide, and I'd like to be clear that the council did not remove that. It went out, the staff sent it out to bid, and we received bids, that was not removed. The zoning and that condition were all approved by the council. We didn't. Then we were in a quandary legally after that happened. So it was not the council. I just, I do believe there was, there was a mistake happened somewhere in there, and that just happens sometimes. It just does. And I, I just want the public to know that that's not, there's no real intent on the council to do that. The only thing we intentionally wanted to do. The only thing we intentionally wanted to do is surplus the property. That was intentional, and that was it. So with that, I'm really not sure here. I'm leaning more towards supporting this motion. I just don't see, myself, I just don't feel I have a legally defensible position to say no. Thank you.
Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, mayor. Similar thoughts as Councilmember Nichols has shared. The other thought being that if you were to look at this and go a little bit further to the north, we have much higher density, I believe even closer to the tracks than what we're, than what we're showing right here. You've got both Brittany townhomes, there's a little more of a buffer with Brittany, but then you go further north to Tuscany, you've got a lot that are right there, very, very close. I think, again, considering just this five-acre parcel, my preference would be commercial, but I'm not so sure about the viability of commercial in that location. And I don't like the idea of requiring commercial access to go through neighborhoods, since there is no direct access off of 7800 South where that traffic would be directed through residential area, where we've already heard from folks who have concerns about schoolchildren in the area, if they're coming home from school during regular business hours in the late afternoon. I'm not sure we would want to send traffic that way intentionally. So right now, I'm leaning more towards the residential option rather than the commercial And I'll leave my thoughts at that for now.
Councilmember Burton.
Thank you, mayor. I like what Councilmember Nichols mentioned, that I think is a good compromise to go half and half. So on that note, I'd like to make a substitute motion that we zone the south half, neighborhood
Motion will die for lack of second. We're back to the original motion. Let's vote.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Hi.
Councilmember Burton?
No.
Councilmember Newton?
Hi.
Mayor Rolfe?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
No.
Councilmember Nichols?
I hope everybody realizes this, this is the miserable spot, but I asked for this when I ran for election four years ago. Yes.
Vote passes, 42 in favor.
Business item 5A, this has been tabled, or does it need a motion to table? So business item 8A has been continued. Does it have a date? Just continued, okay. Business item 8B, discussion and possible action regarding the selection of a fundraising specialist firm and contract. Paul Dodd?
Thank you, mayor. City council, as discussed in the closed session regarding that selection bid process, we will start working tomorrow with the individual that was determined to be responsive. We will have before you by November 22nd, excuse me, 21st, a contract for your consideration to assist in that fundraising effort. So at this point, if we could just simply table this till November 21st, we will have that back before you then.
Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, mayor. My concern is that we've been working towards this since early September, and another two, almost three weeks, I think will severely hinder the fundraising efforts. I know with other contracts where the recipient is known, we've been able to authorize staff to engage them and start the process before the contract is finalized as a formality. Is there a way that we can do something similar with this particular contract, since I'm assuming the amount of work that would be done between now and the 21st would be under the city manager's signing authority? Maybe we could at least find a way to get started.
If you're telling me that if Ms. Otto can get that approval with the contracted individual done tomorrow, I will send it to you in an email, and each of you would respond back with authorization that I or Mr. Wall, one of us, can sign on behalf of the city. We potentially could have this individual working for us by Friday.
That would be, that would be my preference, if the rest of the council is amenable to that.
And then on the 21st, what you would see as a wholly ratified, previously observed, we will share it with the public at that point, but we will certainly get that to you as soon as possible.
No motion was requested, so it seemed like that was direction to staff unless there was opposition to that.
Opposition? Looks like you got direction.
I understand, and it will happen. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
We adjourn.